Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Douglas School Committee meeting for February 3rd, 2021. I'm going to call the meeting to order right at 7:00, and I'm going to do a quick roll call through the school committee. Please.
Anya present?
Kelly Gray present?
Julian Mulder present.
Heather Moore in present.
Lisa Brown is present, thank you. We're going to skip over the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have two student representatives from the middle school, Tyler Beck and Zachary Sargent.
Good evening, my name is Tyler Beck, and I'm here with Zachary Sargent. We are both eighth graders on the middle school Student Council this year. The month of January has brought some ups and downs at the middle school. We were sad to say goodbye to our beloved Principal Mr. Delaney, who has been with our grades since the beginning of middle school. He knew all of our names, and we enjoyed having him pop into our classes as we got Delaney'd, and were able to learn something new about history from him each time. We were also disappointed to have to go full remote for a period of time, as their majority of us would rather be in school, believe it or not. We're looking forward to getting back after a couple more remote days, and due to snow, and we look forward to meeting our new mister, new Principal Mr. Olson.
The yearbook committee is working weekly to plan a grade scrapbook for the students. Eighth graders have been asked to send in baby pictures for one page, and they are creating a page with all the eighth graders' names, and have asked each student to design their name with a digital signature with a unique font choice and emoji. The middle school basketball teams are underway and practicing hard. At this time, we do not have their records, but they have won some and are improving with every game. We wish we were able to watch them in person, but Mr. Aronian has videos that he is sharing.
The eighth graders who are applying to BBT have submitted their applications and interviews as said, scheduled for today and tomorrow. The teachers missed everyone. Good luck today at our morning meeting. Seventh graders did a really cool mini lab with Ms. Walker, where they observed how freshwater and saltwater stay apart when you first mix them before they slowly mix together. Sixth graders are getting ready to present their skits they created for Mrs. Martinson using new grammar rules taught. Presentation skills are being taught before the performances that are being taped. Lots of teamwork have gone into these skits.
Benchmarks have been given across all grades last week and this week. We are glad to have them over with. Trying to create some school spirit, the eighth grade Executive Board is sponsoring Tiger Tuesdays and Flannel Fridays each week for the foreseeable future. They are encouraging all staff and students to wear their tiger gear on Tuesdays and flan- and wear flannel shirts on Fridays, whether they are in person or remote. The Student Council is also planning a spirit week with a few activities for next week before we have February break. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
Tyler, what's that in the background in your room? I'm intrigued.
Oh, so I hate the color of my room. So I just cover it in posters. My sister painted it a very dark blue, and then she left for the Navy, so.
All right. And I can definitely get behind Flannel Fridays, I think, for the foreseeable future. I like that. Any questions for our eighth graders?
Just look forward to meeting you guys, that's all.
Thank you, guys.
You.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move public comment and communication to after the COVID updates. And if, unless anybody has anything that's not COVID-related they would like to bring up. Raise your hand or speak out. It's not a lot of people here. See anything, so if anybody has any old business. See none, any new business? See none, we'll move on to Dr. Vera.
Hello, everyone. Um, so my COVID update for this week, I want to start off by thanking our nurses in the Douglas Public Schools. Today, we had testing of all of our employees. We received a grant through Concentric, and we were able to, on a voluntary basis, test all of our staff. It was a one-time program, you couldn't spread it out. But Kathy Campbell, as our nurse leader, did an incredible job setting it up, registering the programs, dealing with the company, and our nurses did a great job setting it up. We had 140 slots available to staff members, and I think we administered 59 tests today. It'll take about 72 hours for everyone to get their results back, but we were able to offer this opportunity to staff. Again, it was a one-time free test for everyone who wanted it. And again, just another small thing that we're doing to try to help keep people safe and provide people with information. I am still looking at pool testing and potentially bringing that as an option to the schools. I had a scheduled conference call today with the school system, who has been using pool testing through a third party throughout the school year. That got canceled and postponed until tomorrow, but I just want to get some information from them as to how it's working in this school, how much time it takes, how intrusive it is. Hope to be able to get some information to people going forward on our pool testing. I alluded to it a few weeks ago, but this week, we found out that through two separate grants, we've received over $220,000 in grant allocation money. We're still waiting, we should know more by the end of the week, as to what the parameters are that we can use this grant money on. We do know for certain that it can go towards remediation programs. Those programs are things that we're looking to implement this summer and next school year to help mitigate the gaps that have been caused by kids being out of school. Money can also be used for pool testing, and it can also be used for technology for students and for staff. So once we get the parameters of the grants, we can sit down and look at how we're going to spend the money, but really excited about that opportunity. As people can see from the numbers provided to us from the state level, our numbers are trending in the right direction for the past two weeks, significantly in this past week. So I'm really pleased to see them trending in the right direction. But I also want to remind people that we can't become complacent with the safety guidelines. We need to make sure we continue to follow them and adhere to them, that they are working, and the hard work that everyone's done within the school system to keep our kids and our staff safe have worked. So we need to make sure we continue to follow these safety guidelines. Taking a little switch, I'm going to talk a little bit about curriculum, and a little bit about attendance, and a little bit about teaching and learning. And the principals are going to speak to that shortly. I've asked them to present in terms of where we stand with the curriculum from previous years compared to this year. It's important for us to gather this information as we plan for the remainder of this school year, as we build our programs for the summer, and we look to next year. We know that there are gaps because of missing time last year and the hybrid model. What you'll see after the principals present is it really varies from grade level to grade level and subject area to subject area as to what the gaps look like. We're seeing trends of anywhere from one to two weeks to over a month behind from where we were at this point in previous years. It's also important to note that we did start school two weeks later. Nevertheless, we are behind where we've been in previous years. I also worry about mastery. And although in some instances, we might be a week or two from where we've been in previous years, I worry about whether or not kids have actually been able to master the material. We don't have the same contact hours that we had when we were in person. So although we've covered it, have the kids truly mastered it? You know, we've covered the breadth of that material, but I'm not naive for one minute to think that we haven't been able to go to the depth that we have in previous years, given the difference in the schedules. As we're aware of, MCAS this year will be used solely for diagnostic purposes. I think the information we get from the MCAS exam will be very helpful to us determining where the gaps are and what students know and what they don't know. The other thing we're still waiting on is, will there be an adjustment to the benchmarks? The playing field across the nation is different. We have some community, we can look just locally to within Worcester County. We have some school districts who are fully remote. We have some school districts who've been fully in person, and we have some school districts who are hybrid. Those are three distinct models, and the playing field is not level for everyone. So we'll have to wait and see if there's any adjustments to the curriculum that we cover going forward. And the last thing the principals will share is a little bit about attendance tracking, both on our in-person days and our remote days. I had a conversation with Mr. Romano today, and he said that his attendance on in-person days is far exceeding what it's been in previous years. Kids are loving coming to school, and our attendance on those days has been incredible. What we're also going to see is that on remote days, we're going to see a dip in our attendance, especially in grades six through 12. Kids love coming to school on the two in-person days, but those remote days, there's definitely been a decline in attendance. And that impacts, again, how teachers are teaching on those in-person days and the material that we're covering. Principals will cover that when we get into their reports later on in the meeting. That's my COVID update for this meeting. More than happy to entertain questions from the committee, if they have any.
On the U N L F, when the MCAS data comes back, if the state is going to help sort of sort that by model, break it down by a model for each district, how they perform in different areas, or no?
They said they're going to try not to compare district to districts. So I don't know if they're going to do that. We'll have the ability to sort our data in a variety of ways, but I don't know if they're going to come, set up an analysis or a metric to say, here's how District A did, who's fully remote, and how District B did, who's fully in person. I don't know. It's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Anyone? Good to move on.
All right. Really pleased to introduce our new interim middle school principal, Mr. Ralph Olson. Ralph comes to us with over 50 years of experience in public education. He was a high school principal in North Middlesex Regional High School in Ashland, in Waymouth, and he retired from Framing Cam High School as a principal. He spent over 10 years recently serving at several interim positions. He's been the interim high school principal at Durfee, in Burrville, in the Scholber, Murdoch, and in Sharon, and he's been an interim middle school principal in Wilmington, Freetown, Lakeville, and Fall River. What impressed the interview committee about Mr. Olson when we met with him was, one, his experience being an interim. It's difficult coming in halfway through the school year, at the beginning of the school year, knowing you're just going to do it for a few weeks or a few months, and Mr. Olson has a lot of experience doing that. But what really jumped out to us was, he loves kids, loves kids. Came through loud and clear in the interview, and every conversation kept coming back to kids, 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 kids. When he came into school on Friday to meet with Miss Urquhart and Mr. Aronian, I guess he told them to wear their walking shoes, because they're going to be doing a lot of walking around the building to get to know, show them around, and show classrooms, and get to meet people. So he's excited to get started. I just want to take a few minutes to introduce him. Mr. Olson, do you have anything to say?
You've said it all now at this point.
Okay. That's a big buildup.
From Westboro. In my daughter's room, where we have set up with lighting and a screen in the back, she's a teacher at the middle school in Westboro. So she gives me all the tips and tells me about all of the frustrations. So many of them, we can probably start dealing directly when I meet with the faculty tomorrow for the first time. It's been a bit of an auspicious start, obviously. Two snow days and a total remote day on Wednesday, yeah. Difficult task coming in on February, quite frankly. With all of the separate schools that I've been to, I've got to tell you, nothing has been in the middle of the year like this. People extremely helpful, both from the central office with Dr. Vera. Neely has been fantastic, Courtney at the high, at the middle school. Matt has been terrific, as has Maria too. So I haven't had a chance to really touch base with too many people just yet. As Dr. Vera said, I've got a very sketchy resume, particularly out of 2005. I've been all over the place, and every school has its unique situations and issues with which have to be covered very, very quickly. I really believe in being out there, getting to know the staff and the students as quickly as possible. I do not inhabit my office most of the day, and I've already warned Maria that I'm going to be out and around quite a bit in the school, because I want to get a handle on what's going on. And Josh, Josh and I, Josh is the one connection that I've actually had. Josh and I worked together at Murdoch High School. And the only other person that I knew was Kevin Maynes, who was actually a football coach at Ashland High School when I was principal. That's, that's about it. As Dr. Vera said, I have had middle, middle school experiences. There've been much larger schools, probably the only school that's close to the population of what you have here was up at Murdoch, and that was around 300 kids that we had at that school over there as well. But there were interims at three different middle schools altogether. I'm really excited at the opportunity to, to come to Douglas at this time. And again, I'm very appreciative of the people that I've had come in contact with already. Again, coming in in February has its challenges, but I'm psyched and ready to go, both with the students and with the faculty that's there. I have an opportunity to meet with them tomorrow morning. That's been delayed by a couple of days too, but I can assure you, I'll give them plenty of energy and everything else. It's nice seeing people without masks on for a change.
I will share with you how excited Ralph was about the opportunity. Our first interview with him was a few weeks ago, when he was in, in Florida, enjoying his condo down there. And before he even knew he was a finalist, he booked a plane flight back to Massachusetts. And when I called him to let him know that he was a finalist, he answered the phone on the runway down in Fort Myers. And he's like, Paul, I gotta go, the plane's about to take off, I'll talk to you when I land. So he was ready to go as soon as we finished our Zoom session. So we're excited to have him on board and to learn from him.
Virtual tour I took you on to show you the water out in the back of the condo with the mangroves.
We, we did have a virtual tour and lookout, correct?
Out of a shock, but I'm looking forward to it. And really, the one real missing ingredient, I think, for the students and everybody else is restoring some interpersonal skills. Getting time, electronics, and texting, and email, and so forth. It's nice to look people straight. So, ready to go.
Any questions from the committee? Mr. Olson?
No, but, um. Well, welcome, Mr. Olson. And obviously, Dr. Vera is a great pick at picking people like him, because that's why, one of the things that drew us to Dr. Vera was his love for kids, and to give up the Florida sunshine for the kids here, that's, that's awesome. Very excited.
We have a chat, but not much, unfortunately.
I was going to say the same, welcome, and if you give up Florida to come here, then we, we know that you're invested, so thank you.
Got to taste the reality with the weather you have.
That's for sure.
Thank you again, and we look forward to working with you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have learning gaps. And I'm going to turn it over to the principals again to speak a little bit about, as I said earlier in my report, where we are now in comparison to previous years. And to touch not only on the learning gaps, but a little bit on attendance. I've asked them to keep it to about three to five minutes. And we will start with Mrs. Sosha, because she always sets the bar very high for others.
Thank you. Excuse me for reading, but this is a little lengthy, so here we go. As we anticipate larger-than-normal learning gaps as a result of remote instruction beginning last year, teachers, administrators, and parents are working tirelessly to keep our students learning. Most would agree that remote learning for our young learners is not a substitute for being in the classroom. During our remote learning days, we have noticed our attendance is inconsistent and much lower. This is due in part that parents are working and are not able to assist five- and six-year-olds on Zoom meetings. Another factor to consider is that although the teachers have made remote learning activities fun and engaging, five- and six-year-olds have a short attention span and are easily distracted by things at home. By definition, learning gaps are the difference between what a student is expected to have learned by a certain grade level versus what they have actually learned up to that point. If these gaps are not addressed, students are likely to fall further and further behind. Obviously, this creates a major challenge for our educators. At the end of last year, teachers identified what standards were met prior to remote learning, what standards were covered during remote learning, and what standards were not covered at all. Then teachers met from kindergarten with first-grade teachers, first-grade teachers met with second-grade teachers, and so on, to share that information. Fortunately, our reading and our math curriculum spiral from skills introduced in kindergarten in grade one to more practice in grade two, and then on to mastery of skills. In order to combat learning gaps brought about by COVID-19, teachers need to identify them so that they can plan for students' needs. The best strategies for closing students' learning gaps include the following. Analyzing data from Ames Web Assessments that we do three times a year. We're right in the middle of our mid-year assessment, benchmark assessments, and informal assessments. Differentiating instruction. Practice makes progress when students are continuously asked the same kinds of questions when they're reading. They're always asked about, what is the main idea, what is, what are the details, and things like that. They tend to improve, it's practice. Small group instruction, putting students that have the same learning gaps together into small groups. Progress monitoring, running records, bi-weekly fluency assessments, end-of-unit assessments, high-frequency assessments. So where are we in kindergarten compared to last year? In EALA and math, we're about two to three weeks behind due to the late start. Skills are prioritized during in-person learning days. We feel that we are skimming the curriculum at this point, and students are lacking that practice time necessary for them to be successful. Students do not have the opportunity to work independently in school or at home. Although parents want to help, they're not allowing the kids to be independent sometimes on Zoom. Where are we in grade one compared to last year? In EALA, we are where we should be, but again, we are skimming the curriculum. We are prioritizing what's more important, what should we be doing when we're in person. And the lack of practice time is becoming evident. Handwriting and letter formation has become a huge gap for us that we're seeing in K and in one. Grade one math, we are piloting a new program and struggling due to the amount of reading that it requires. So in closing, having our early learners in person for two days is better than not at all, but it doesn't meet the needs of our students. The ideal scenario would be to have them in person for five days. Any questions?
And again, we all knew this was going to happen. When you missed, from the time you missed last year, we started school two weeks late. We're in a hybrid model. We knew that if you're not in school five days, gaps are going to occur. And there are certain things, especially down in that elementary level, where you need to be in person to refine and meet those skills. We're aware of them, we're identifying them, we're addressing them, and now we need to get ready to put a plan in place for the end of this year and next year, to begin to make sure that the gaps don't increase, they decrease. But we need to start collecting that data and know where our kiddos are and where our teachers are with them. So we're in the process of doing that. Mr. Bell?
Could I ask a quick question before, Mr. Bell? Sorry, Mr. Bell. Mrs. Sosha, I know this is not searching for information to make any kind of answer, but I know that, you know, in the past month or so, we had talked about what would reopening the schools look like over a period of time. And there had been some talk of the primary school having space, like possibly to share rooms for the same class so that both cohorts could be in at the same time. I was wondering if there's any progress in terms of looking at that space? Do we have the distance to be able to keep the safety protocols in place? What sort of the status of that?
We do have a plan. I have to tell you, though, it came out, I was kind of holding back from telling my teachers that plan, but it kind of came out because we were trying to fit a set of twins into kindergarten classes. And when I mentioned that, in order to bring everyone back, we would have to have, remove people from their regular classroom and either put them in the gym, or the cafeteria, or the library, or adjoining rooms where their paraprofessional would be in one room and the teacher in the other. You might have thought that I cut off their right hand. And I get it, teachers like to be in their own space, the materials are there. They were very upset with the fact that they would have two adjoining rooms, and so I'm not sure. I mean, in order to keep the space requirement, the six feet, that's what we would have to do. So we have it all planned out, I have it all mapped out, but.
No, that is fair enough. I mean, there's a lot of parties that make a school work, everybody here knows. So, yeah, it's good to get an update on that, thank you.
The Bell?
All right, so I want to first start off by just saying thank you to our teachers and our staff. They have worked tirelessly, I know, in every building, but I see what happens at the elementary school every day. And we wouldn't be where we are without the awesome staff that we have. Today, we spent some time in our staff and really digging into where are we at in the curriculum, to kind of see, you know, pacing-wise compared to last year, where we are. For Writing, Science, and Social Studies, we are right where we should be, if not further ahead, because the way we've done our schedules this year, there's actually dedicated blocks of time that, I think in the past, you know, a math lesson might go longer, so we cut a little bit out of Science or Social Studies, those types of things. This year, there's a dedicated block of time for Science and Social Studies and for Writing, and so our teachers are actually reporting that we're further ahead than we typically are in those areas. However, because of that, we aren't able to give that extra time in math and reading. And so those are the areas where we're a little bit further behind. In, in reading, most of the, we're right where we are in pacing-wise, but obviously with level of mastery, we're missing out on some of those, you know, the mastery of phonics and those skills that we're learning as we go through the year. They cycle, and we hit them several times, but our kids are just not at that same place they typically are at this point. In math, same thing, most of our grades were one, two, three weeks behind where they typically are. None of them were like, oh, my goodness, we, we're too far behind, we're never going to get through everything. But it's far enough behind that we're, you know, we're going to have to push to get through everything this year. And we're also noticing that because we're moving through the curriculum pretty quickly, we aren't getting that depth that we typically get. And we're also, like, we were talking about fact fluency in math today. We have, you know, fourth graders that don't, haven't mastered their addition and subtraction. Now we're throwing multiplication on top of it, those types of things. And I think we all know that if they don't have those basic pieces in reading and in math down, as they get up into the higher grades, those are stumbling blocks that cause them to have issues. So we want to make sure those pieces are in place. We have been giving our mid-year benchmark testing this, the last couple of weeks, and I have some preliminary data compared to where we were last year mid-year. In reading, our scores actually were slightly better than they were last year, which is really exciting. And in math, they were slightly lower than where they were last year. But so everybody knows about these benchmark tests, they're taken on a computer, they're multiple-choice tests. They measure basic knowledge, they, they don't do the best job at measuring that in-depth understanding. You know, do the kids have the number sense, do they really understand the deeper context, or any of those types of things? So there was some, some encouraging data that, you know, the things that the teachers are doing on a day-to-day basis, and all the work the parents are putting on their end, we're holding our own. But we are obviously still concerned about that deeper learning piece, because I think that's where it's going to impact us further down the road. As far as attendance goes, we had last year an average daily attendance of about 97% of our students in person. Were present each day. This year, on our in-person days, we're still at 97%. So on the in-person days, we have the same attendance we've always had. On the remote learning days, we're averaging 71%. We lose about a third of our kids on those remote learning days. With chronic attendance, last year, the entire year, out of 180 school days, students that had 15 or more absences, we had 10. And the most absences from one student without like a medical need or something like that was 20 absences. This year, through 85 school days, we have 10 students that have 15 or more absences. So in half as many days, half as many days of school, we've already reached. So in half as many days, half as many days as school, we've already reached that same threshold. And we have seven students that have twenty or more absences, going all the way up to fifty-one absences. So those students, and there's some similar names on the two lists, but it was really interesting to see that when those students that already struggled in person with sometimes being on time, being in school, we throw in the remote piece and they're dropping off the pace of everything. So our students are definitely more successful when they're in person. And we hear from parents every day asking for their kids to come back to school because when they're at school, we have control over those six and a half hours a day. When they're at home, there's so many other factors that influence what they're able to do. So we definitely are noticing that impact in our students. The students that already had it together and were doing well in school before COVID are holding their own right now. The kids that were struggling are on the edge. They're the ones that are hurting right now as we're doing this hybrid learning.
John, can you speak a little bit to what you, Mr. Aroni, and Mrs. Blessing do for the kids who aren't coming to school, some of the things you have in place and some of the reach outs that you do?
So Mr. Aroni does a great job about, it's about once a month, he runs a report to kind of see where absences are at. And we flag, you know, as we go through the year, the level of, level of absences changes. You know, the first month of school, if there, no one's at fifteen absences. So we look at like, you know, who's at four or five. Now we're looking at, you know, who's at fifteen absences. And we start off with a phone call. We see if we can, you know, sometimes it's Mr. Aronian does it, sometimes it's Miss Blessing. It really depends on who's had more contact with the families. Sometimes I'll make the phone call. Sometimes the teachers are making those phone calls. But just checking in with the families and seeing, you know, what's going on. Is there anything we can help with? And a lot of times it is, you know, the parents at work and the kids at home with an older sibling and those types of things, and they're doing their best. But we try to work with the families and provide some flexibility. After that, if it continues, then we follow it up with a formal attendance letter. We do a second attendance letter. We file with DCF or we filed the truancy reports and those types of things. But we try to avoid those more drastic measures and we try to work collaboratively with the families as much as we can. We have a document that we use that teachers can add information like, oh, this kid hasn't been on a Zoom for the last three days. We check in with them. And Mr. A and Miss Blessing are constantly checking that document and following up with families. And this helps us keep track of who's where and how many contacts we've had. So we're not having, you know, eight contacts in one day. We're having, we're kind of able to streamline that.
Questions for the elementary school? All right. I think we have both Ms. Urquhart and Mr. Aronian presenting for the middle school.
You do.
All right.
So I'm going to begin with, first of all, I'm going to begin with thank yous, then I'm going to move to curriculum, and then Mr. Aronian is going to jump to the attendance piece. So first off, I just, I want to thank the, the middle, the entire middle school staff for their, their level of flexibility and ease over the past few weeks and dealing with a, with an unexpected transition. They did a fantastic job and will continue to do a fantastic job with, with Mr. Olson, who are very excited to have. And then I, I want to really talk about three more people. Number one is, is Mr. Aronian, who we often see sprinting between the middle school and the elementary school. But, you know, for the, for the last three weeks, it's, it's just been a real hard focus on the middle school. And without him, I certainly, I certainly could not have, have jumped into that acting principal position and really understood the, the complete dynamics of the middle school. So thank you to Matt. In addition, I'd like to thank Lauren Nissi, well, actually, three, three people from the office support. Lauren Nissidi, Sky Bamba, and Lois Bartolini for being patient and really taking over the Office of Student Support, you know, while I was trying to help out the middle school and just keeping the ship, the ship afloat. So thanks so much. So now at this point. Oh, boy. Okay, here we go.
Did you freeze?
Well. My husband's on a meeting. I'm going to do my best, okay? I'm going to do my best. I'm going sort of in and out. If you can't hear me, just tell me, okay? So the first thing that I did was, you know, I reached out to all the teams and all the teachers in the middle school and really talked about four major concepts, which were a curriculum change comparison, a curriculum timeline, pitfalls for students learning during this time, and, and student engagement. So the first thing that I will talk about is, hold on, you guys, I'm sorry. I keep losing my presentation. Okay, so the first thing I'm going to talk about is the curriculum change comparison. So basically, what, what the teachers discussed across all three grade levels is that they really had to adapt the curriculum to Google Classroom, making digital materials available to students. And a lot of those, those digital materials that they created, they created on their own. So it was a bit of a learning curve for, for them. In, in creating these digital assessments and assignments and videos, you know, they weren't just teaching to, you know, the kids who are in hybrid, but also teaching the kids that were in the Douglas Learning Academy. And they feel that that change has really occurred in all of the curriculum areas. It wasn't just, you know, specific to math or EALI or science and social studies. They found it to be across the board. They, they really recognize that Google Classroom is now a necessity, and, and it really is used as a platform for learning at this time. They, they, I think they always understood that keeping organized with, with grading was very important. But now they feel that there is a heightened importance and it's a lot more challenging. And with that, the, the whole concept of taking attendance has been different for them and very difficult for them, and they feel is still remaining a challenge. I think that they feel that they've acclimated in many ways to many things regarding curriculum. But, but something, you know, like, like attendance, that you think that, you know, you, you would gain those skills, it's, it's still very hard for them. Because the lessons have turned digital, it can be cumbersome to be teaching and assessing students online only. They've spent many hours really establishing what the curriculum should be as compared to what it was throughout the years. And there's this overall feeling that, that they're really first-year teachers again. And I, I think that a lot of your teachers at the middle school are very seasoned, talented teachers. And what can often come with that is obviously control of your curriculum, control over your, your knowledge of how to execute. And in many ways, they're feeling that, you know, even with the professional development that was provided to them, they were so extremely thankful for that. But feeling in many ways that they didn't know what they were doing, for lack of a better term, you know, and it's coming along. But what they're seeing with the curriculum is that at the end of the day, the kids are accessing better when, when they are in person. So then moving to the curriculum timeline, data and observation at Douglas Middle School is indicating that teachers are behind at least one or two months in some curriculum areas as, as compared to a typical year. What I would have loved to have had would be the NWEA data. We are in the process, well, their middle school is in the process of that right now, so I do not have the data. However, I do feel that once we have that, I think that's crucial for everybody to hear about. So, you know, what I can do is keep on top of that and work with Ralph and Matt, you know, to see if we can come back to you guys in a few weeks and provide you with that because that's some, that's some good data for us to look at. I will tell you, the last time this year that it was done was in September and October. But, you know, we can also pull from the year prior to see how we can look at some trends. You know, teachers feel that with the remote learning, in-person instruction, it, it seems, it seems that they're teaching multiple subjects. So e- even if a teacher in the middle school level is teaching just a math course, they still feel like they're teaching multiple subjects. And it's just this idea of, of catch-up. Excuse me. Whereas when it's in person, it doesn't feel as bad. So now to move to the, the pitfalls in, sorry, the pitfalls for student learning. Many projects and group activities have been tabled due to safety concerns. The slower pace has resulted in teachers having to forego the quote-unquote fun activities to focus on and, and things that they use for a lot of skills. And in addition to that, many, many games that they use, manipulatives they use, all of these things are not usable this year. I, I think that the idea of hands-on centers or games, which really in many ways would, would help kids to engage on different aspects of skill practice just can't happen right now. And the idea is that it's very hard to translate cooperative learning into Zoom because breakout rooms can only accomplish so much. So collaborating with, with other educators, implementing projects that normally would take place, it just isn't feasible right now because of the idea of having to, to space out. You know, the, the ideas of the math, the ideas of not, not cross-contaminating, for, for lack of a better term. And, you know, in many ways, they feel that it's really a back-to-basics concept, you know, where at this point in the year, they feel that they, they would probably be a lot further along. Whether it be the writing, the grammar, the reading, the comprehension, the math skills, all of it. And, you know, they continue to, to feel that in-person learning, even, even within this aspect of the pitfalls, in-person learning just continues to be a better way for them, however, the safety is still an issue. And then the last part for me is, is the student engagement. Teachers find that student engagement depends on the individual student. And I think like, I, I think that's, that's in any sort of model. You know, you are always going to have students that, that take to their education and, and display either different sorts of strengths or weaknesses, or motivation or lack of motivation. But, but what they're seeing is, is that there are some kids, kids who, and I think John and Cindy spoke to this a little, kids, even if they had the slightest issue, now we're seeing, especially with the remote, they're just falling away. You know, so it's that idea that, you know, some are struggling and, and some are just not thriving at all. And it appears easier to gauge student engagement in person because once a student is falling behind or struggling, it's difficult to catch, catch them up in a remote learning. So that, that's basically it. Before matchups into attendance, you know, the, the other thing that I do want to, I do want to talk about is just the idea of the social emotional learning, you know, and, and I do think that as much as the middle school teachers have, have tried this year in, I, I think, I think by utilizing the school adjustment counselor, Kate McCardle, school psychologist, Carolyn Thompson, Matt Aronian, these Udiina students, they've, they've really tried to track, and John talked a little bit about, about that tracking. Matt uses a lot of that same tracking form at the middle school. It's been very helpful to see who our high-needs students are. But something that, you know, I was just actually talking about with Ralph today, that I think that, that the middle school would really benefit from, and, and all the schools would probably benefit from, is the idea of, of looking at now with, with COVID, what is high needs for social emotional? You know, because we, we talked about this at our blueprint meeting last night a little. You know, prior to COVID, we had this concept of increasing mental health. We had this concept of increasing drug use in some families. And then you add a pandemic on top of it, right? So what's that do? It snowballs into all sorts of additional social emotional issues. So, so what we might have to do is sort of reinvent that criteria, you know, and reinvent what, what high needs is and how we're going to address that for kids. And how, you know, again, not just the school adjustment counselor or the admin can do it, but all teachers within, within the classroom to help. So, so that is, that is my piece. Matthew, you are up.
Thanks, Neil. You know, I'm not, you know, listening to John, what John said and, you know, to piggyback off, off Neil with the in-person learning and the social emotional piece. I'm not going to, you know, sit here and beat a dead horse, but we struggle just the same as the elementary school, I'm sure, just as much as the high school does. Because with attendance, because of that social emotional piece, especially at the middle school level. You know, some facts to throw out there, it's just a lower estimate as I'm, as I'm digging through I-Pass, about seventy percent of our absences, seventy percent of our, of all absences are remote absences. So in eighth grade alone, remote absences is most likely contribute to more than seventy percent. So, and a kind of a cool statistic that I pulled from I-Pass, just looking at comparing just in-school absences to remote absences. So in sixth, seventh, and eighth, if a student is in school, we average about one point eight absences a, a day. So, you know, we have maybe one child out if they're in person in school learning. For our children that are remote, we're looking at four plus in, in sixth grade, in an eighth grade, we're looking at six absences a day compared if they're in school. So at the middle school level, we really struggle with attendance, especially for our remote learners. Another scary statistic to kind of throw out there is we have over thirty-six plus students with more than ten absences. And eighth grade is a large percentage of that. Some of these students, as John says, we have a, you know, Miss McCardle, Miss Blessing, and I kind of follow a, a protocol as we go through attendance. And this year is very different than any other year just because I have to take into account that kids are remote. So I approach the attendance issues very, very differently than I would in the normal year. But some of these students are on their third parent meeting, third attendance letter. You know, and as we said at last resort, as ever, would, I would never want to call DCF or file, file a CRA with, you know, with Brett, but I mean, sometimes it's a last resort right now. So it's very scary. So.
Any questions for the middle school?
I have a few questions. Okay, so I was, sorry, I was just taking notes as Neil was talking. And I, I love, one of the things that has been brought up under a couple of different circumstances, which is this word, student engagement. Because I feel like that is desperately what these kids are lacking, and yeah, they're lacking the social emotional, but that student engagement, I love that that's being discussed. But one of the things that was brought up was, I have an issue with the attendance thing. So my understanding is there was phone calls that are made and then truancy letters get sent out. But what happens when you only get a truancy letter, but you don't get those phone calls previous? It's a little upsetting to a parent. And I'm just wondering, one of the comments that I heard was that it's hard to take attendance. So me, as a parent, I just learned what it means to be present in middle school. I didn't know that it just means that you have to show up to homeroom. And then like on Wednesdays, I have a kid, and maybe I'm telling you too much, but like I have a kid that basically on Wednesdays, he's like, I don't have school. My other two do, but he doesn't. So I feel like a huge problem is communication. And really truly understanding what it means to be in school, and it's all challenging. And then I want to follow up with a comment about the Zooms and about those pitfalls in the breakout sessions. Is there any other platforms that kids can use so that they can work with each other, going back to that student engagement? Like, I don't know, can you use Google Classroom to do group projects? And can that be monitored like on Wednesdays? That's where I was going with those questions.
Willie and Matt, I'll, I'll take the student engagement piece. Do you guys want to touch a little bit upon the attendance? You can speak to it better than I can.
Yep, no, that's absolutely, Julie, you have, you have a good point. The, the attendance system, am I on here? Sorry. The attendance system is imperfect, the middle school. You know, I, I understand that the way we take attendance with the homeroom is where they're marked present, if they attend homeroom. And then, you know, obviously, a student can then disappear for the rest of the day, but be marked present, and, you know, just the opposite could happen. So when we, when we do send out and we do make those calls, we take all that into account. That's why I said each, I almost have to say that we take each student in the individual case-by-case basis. So, you know, when we do, you know, if, if a call did not go out or, and a letter went out, it's just, most of the letters are for FYI. When parents do call, I do say, it's just an FYI for you, you know, to make sure that you understand how many absences the student has. In, in my experience this year, I've learned that a lot of parents aren't checking I-Pass. They're not checking their, their, their student's attendance, and they're not checking their student's grades. Probably just out of mind, nervous to check in, in parents that I've talked to. So that's kind of, you know, So that's kinda, you know, unfortunately, it's a case-by-case basis, so it kinda stinks in that way, understandable.
The tricky part of-
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul.
Oh, go ahead.
Julie, just a quick question for you. So you mentioned communication, you know, I, I think anytime a school or a school district, you know, hears that, that parents, you know, feel that there potentially could be an issue with communication, obviously, that's something that we wanna resolve because that's the key to everything in many ways. Where, where and what do you feel is lacking, just so we have that level of awareness and, and we can work around that?
I think when you have children that want privacy and they wanna do their own thing, and you hover over them and try to find out, like, what is it? Where, what are you supposed to be doing right now? What class are you supposed to be in, especially if you're not at home and you're checking in on them? And they say, well, we don't have to be in class, but like, at the same time, like, how do I know that? So I know like the teachers, they generally will communicate, I have direct experience with this, I'll be honest. The teachers will communicate, a lot of times it's after the fact. So if my son doesn't show up to a class, I hear about it, but it's after the fact. Understandably, because like, why would they say Ryan's not in class if he, you know, he is in class? So I think what would have happened is maybe some engagement where like a teacher sends something to a parent. Cause another thing is, is like if there's a lot of email communications, by email, some, for some reason from the school, it goes into junk. And unless I look in the junk email, I never find it. So maybe some kind of engagement where a teacher sends something to a parent, and a parent can acknowledge that they've received it, rather than just trusting that the kid is telling you something. I don't know, I don't really know that answer, to be honest with you. I just feel like there's a piece that's missing, and I feel like that piece is, it's, it's with the parent. Cause I mean, these are your kids, and so you do have to take a little responsibility. And I understand some parents, they just, they're overwhelmed. So I, I don't know, I don't have that answer, I really don't.
The, the, the attendance piece can be somewhat addressed if you change from daily attendance to period attendance. That's one thing. There, there are more robust systems, obviously at a cost of different than IPass, that will notify you if kids aren't or are or are not in, in classes daily. But if we switch from daily attendance to period attendance, you might be able to get a little bit more information. In terms of the Zoom piece, the breakout rooms in Zoom are great, but if you think of a regular classroom with twenty kids in it, and kids breaking out into four groups of five, a teacher can circulate around the room and listen in on one group and assist them, but also know if the other three groups are paying attention or on task or off task. When you do the Zoom breakout rooms, the teacher can only be at one place at one time. So you break out the rooms into four groups of five, and a teacher logs into group one to listen to the work they're doing. There's no way of knowing if the other three groups are on task or off task, unless a teacher then logs back into that group. So I think some teachers are struggling a little bit with that, which is why it makes the breakout rooms difficult. You put seven or eight sixth graders in a breakout room without any supervision. You hope they're gonna do what you ask them to do for twenty minutes. A lot of them do, some of them don't. So there really isn't a platform that I'm aware of, that you can create four different breakout rooms and have the teacher have oversight into those four different breakout rooms.
I have a piggyback comment off of Julie, and unless Julie, you have any follow-up questions about the breakout?
No, no, sorry, I don't wanna take up everybody's time, no.
And then I guess I have sort of a follow-up question too about the attendance. So just to piggyback off, off of Julie, I know that at the younger grades, and this has something to do with what Mrs. Sosha says too. I think from the parent end, it's difficult to manage how much you're supposed, how involved you are supposed to be. Because we know that independence is part of it too. I, I have a daughter that has, she, she can't type, and everything is typing. So like every day that she's home, I'm making a decision, when am I gonna jump in and start typing for her? So that she can show her, show her knowledge without fatiguing, freaking out and not wanting to do the rest of her schoolwork. And I make a note to the teachers, I typed this for her, she worked through it. But I'm not, I'm not a trained fourth grade teacher, so I don't know how much interaction I'm supposed to be giving her. The same thing with my kindergarten, I don't know how much I'm supposed to be on top of her. Aside from making sure that they're on the Zoom. There also can be things lost in translation in terms of, in the classroom. If you have a math lesson planned and you don't fit it all in, it's very easy for a teacher to say, that's it, we're done for the day. But once it's in black and white on that Google Classroom, it's difficult, at least at the younger age, and I assume middle school too, could apply to anybody. If a teacher says on a Zoom that a parent is not privy to, you don't have to finish it. And then it's, it's there, it's a sign, but they were told they didn't have to finish it, there's like a level of trust here. So I, I guess, at least this is for information purposes for all of you. I think it's, there is a lack of clarity on the parent end for how much we are supposed to be holding their hands through this process. And then, and I don't know that there's anything you can do about it, it might just be the nature of the beast. And then my follow-up question is whether you find that, especially at the middle school, that the lack of attendance is related very proportionately to the lack of turning in material? Cause I could also see a parent saying, hey, my kid didn't check in, but she did all her work, so. So what? But I don't know, I, do we know if it's very related to students who are not doing the work either?
Is there a correlation, Matt, that you've seen?
Yeah, so that, that's a good question. Not necessarily, I mean, so our, most of our kids that have high absences are, are the ones struggling the most. So I guess there is somewhat of a correlation between students that are attending and, and grades. But in terms of students not attending and doing work, you know, I, I haven't seen that. I'll take a look, that's a good, that's a good, that's a good thing to look for, so I apologize for that.
Hey, don't apologize, but none of this is criticism, you know? I can say this until I'm blue in the face, like, we're dealing with a, a global crisis. And I value everything that all of you are doing, everybody, so.
Can I comment the student learning part, just a piece of their online? You know, you asked if parents should be holding kids' hands and whatnot. You know, just being on the front line and, and having conversation with parents and having parents, you know, I, I have more parents sobbing on the phone to me that, you know, they're, they're trying their best, they're sued, they can't. It, it's very, very difficult for the students to be learning online. It's not easy, we, you know, we, we've thrown this at them and nowhere, a year, a year into this, you know, it, it's just, online learning is not easy. There's a reason why colleges only let you take, you know, two courses when you're online because of the workload. So I try to explain to parents, these, these students are taking on five courses, you know, so it, it's very difficult. So I always say to parents, hold their hand as much as you can, you know what I mean? But i- if you wanna let go, you can do that too. There's, there's really no right or wrong, how, how parents kind of approach that, so.
And, and I know, I know at the beginning of the year, we, we reached out to parents, and I think Brian did it at the middle school, was some form of a class around technology. May- maybe it might be worthwhile, especially at the, in, in the younger grades, to have a discussion with PTO and some parents as to putting together an information session as to, you know, where, where is that line between what's too much handholding and what's not enough handholding for kids, and where, where do we build those independent skills? But it's also tough when, when you're home as a parent and you see your kid struggling. And by nature intuitively, you, you wanna dive in and help, but you're like, do I do it, do I not do it? And we're all learning, we're all learning through this, but that, that might be a good thing for us to look into after break, to have that discussion, or at least a town hall forum with, with parents, just to listen to them and have Cindy and John be able to provide some feedback. It's a good suggestion.
And I just wanna say one other thing, again, not to be a dead horse, but I've said this from, like, even from last year. So kids, they're not, they're not engaged, but like, I think that we also have to start thinking a little bit more creatively. If we have this attendance problem, what can we do creatively to make it work? And so the first thing that always comes to my mind is like when the PTO does their penny drives and stuff, kids, they don't have that comp, they wanna do competition, they're sitting on their Xboxes and playing games with everybody. And they're engaged with a lot of their friends outside of school, which in some ways I feel, hate to say it, but I actually think it's good for them. But maybe there's competitions within the classes and within the grades about who gets the best attendance, and then you get some sort of prize, I don't know, but like, maybe we need to just go that route and see how that works. Like make it like so that they have that group bonding that they don't have right now in that class and that grade bonding. I, I don't know, like, that's just an idea, and it might work for like middle schoolers, maybe elementary school, probably not the littler kids, but maybe, I don't know.
Mr. Romano and I had that very discussion today, and he's gonna talk a little bit about some ideas he has. I know we've talked a little bit, you know, we heard it at the middle school, with some things they're doing to build morale, build some school spirit and have it. But that's also, again, a, a good suggestion. I think we talked about doing a penny drive at, at one point with the four milk jugs and the pennies in and nickels and dimes for points and maybe doing something for kids. But, you know, anything we can do to increase that engagement and that excitement i- is, is a good thing. All right, Mr. Romano. The bar's been set high.
Well, Dr. Vera did say three minutes, so I'm gonna try to stick to three minutes. In the five core academic departments, most departments vary from being on pace to up to three weeks behind. And it really depends on the teachers, so even within departments, you get that range of on pace to three weeks behind. To speak to a few specifics, in particularly the AP courses, because in those courses, we are held to an outside standard. The college board sets the standard for how much curriculum has to be covered by what is gonna be on that AP exam at the end. AP Bio, Chemistry and Environmental, they're feeling that time crunch. The college board released some revised pacing suggestions. And AP Bio and Chemistry, they're following that. Unfortunately, what that does is it takes out those highly engaging labs that they really enjoy doing. AP Physics is kinda the exception, they're ahead because the college board actually changed the scope of the course. So Mr. Morris is actually a couple of months ahead in that course. I think he needs to figure out what he's gonna teach towards the end. Math is about two week, two to three weeks behind, Spanish a couple of weeks behind. History, AP Micro is a few weeks behind. Mr. McGrath will make up for that by cutting into the review that they normally do. AP History's on pace. AP Gov, the, the pacing is okay, but what they're finding is that they're, he's not able to go into the depth that he normally would go into for that. And I think that's pretty common, not just in the history department, but across departments. The history department did make some significant changes with their curriculum, teaching themes as opposed to teaching details in the college prep and honors level courses, which has kept them mostly on pace. But it inherently means that you're sacrificing the depth and detail in order to cover the sweeping overall themes of history. And ELA, they're struggling to fit the writing in. They're probably a few weeks behind where they normally would be. They're just getting ready, for example, in the freshman classes to do the interdisciplinary research paper that they do. They're gonna end up doing less literature this year, for sure, they're trying to fit all the writing that they normally would do. So that's kinda where we are as far as the curriculum. Any questions on that?
No, I'm just gonna do my usual, AP Chemistry is kicking our butts in this house, I gotta tell you. That is, I appreciate everything she's doing, but that is, these kids who are trying to do these AP Sciences at home, it's just brutal.
Ms. Dower is one of the best chemistry teachers I've worked with, and that course is, is quite the thing when you're not dealing with COVID and face-to-face time, and you can't do the labs because you have to keep socially distanced. So it, it is a significant challenge. As far as attendance, the attendance for remote students, we're generally about thirty percent of the kids miss at least part of the day. And we do period attendance, and the way that that's tracked is did they complete their assignments for the day? About thirty percent of the kids miss at least one class, they don't do that work, or they don't do the daily check-in that we do. Unfortunately, a lot of those students are also our more high need students, so they're students with disabilities. And it has a disproportionate impact on their learning that they're missing significant amounts of school. Before COVID, DHS was about ninety-four percent daily attendance, and that was pretty consistent over the last three years. This year, the in-person attendance, it's about eighty-five percent for Cohort A, about ninety percent for Cohort B. That was one of the things that Dr. Vera and I actually talked about this morning, is kinda having, making it competitive between the cohorts to get higher attendance. And then we also talked about, I was kinda thinking, you know, kids who have perfect attendance for so many days, they can get cocoa or coffee and, and donuts from me and Mr. Vega, who wouldn't wanna get munchkins from Mr. Vega? But just kinda come up with some sort of incentive for the kids to have their, to bring their attendance up. So that's a little bit down from where we normally are, that normally at ninety-four, this year eighty-five and ninety. But that does include students who are in quarantine or isolation, which can be thirteen to fifteen kids per cohort. So if you correct for those students, we're actually closer to ninety percent present for Cohort A, and, and maybe even ninety-five, ninety-six percent for Cohort B, higher than what it is in normal years for Cohort B. I think what this kinda reflects is that kids understand the importance of being in school when they're supposed to have their in-person classes. So I think we picked up some in the in-person attendance, but there's just drop-off in the remote attendance. And incidentally, I do wanna also recognize the staff's attendance has been consistently high this year, and I think it's the same thing. You know, they definitely recognize that, you know, they, if they miss a day with a kid, with a class, they really are missing a week. So it's been, the, the staff has been phenomenal in their consistently high attendance this year too. All right, I, that was just over, that was just under five minutes.
Thank you, Josh.
And I just make a quick comment, because the, the, the thing that just came up in chat is exactly what I was gonna say. I get the idea of making a competition so that, you know, it engages the kids, but at the same time, we're supposed to be telling these kids, if you're sick, stay home.
Yeah, that's why, you know, we, I, when I look at the data, that's why I was pulling out the kids that were in, you know, isolation.
No, so it's great to hear that apart from the kids who are quarantining, the rest of them are coming to school. I just think the idea of some of these, you know, competitions to see who can have the best. I still want the kids who are, you know, even thinking, well, I don't feel well.
Stay home.
Stay home.
I think my comments were in direct relation to the remote learning, not necessarily the end day. Cause yeah, I, I respect what you're saying, but I also think that going to something you said Kelly earlier, which was, th- these kids, they wanna come to school, and I think that in and of itself is what drives them. Because you can't do AP classes on your own at home, it's so challenging. So these kids, it's so funny to hear them excited to go to school, because they get to learn. Because at home, they're using, honestly, they're in Google a lot of times to teach themselves things, because it's really challenging to do the online learning, even the high, especially the high school kids. I hear it from a, a, all of these high school kids, they say the same thing. And they love being in school because it's time where they can engage with their teachers and with the students in class.
And I think it's the same for teachers, I think, you know, I, I, I know Mr. Reardon was on here, yeah, he's on here. Kevin and I have said over and over again, that I, we want to just be back to normal, like, we want it to be the way it was before, because that's clearly, like, nothing really replaces that face-to-face interaction.
Am I allowed to speak? Can I, can I make a comment, Ms. Brown?
Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to say hello to Mr. Olson and, and welcome him to Douglas. I am the, the DTA president, and I hope I never have to sit with you for a grievance or anything like that. I, I just wanted to speak from, from a teacher's standpoint. I mean, it's very clear what we're hearing from everybody here is that the lack of in-person is hurting the kids not only educationally, but social emotionally. I'd like to speak just from, from my own personal success. Over the last three days while we were remote, my kids were attending my Zoom sessions. We had great interaction. I was able to cover my curriculum consistently, consistently for three days in a row with no gaps and no interruptions. I haven't been able to do that in the hybrid model. We wanna be full in person. Nobody wants to be full in person more than the teachers do. That's where we shine, that's where we do our thing with the kids, and that's why they love being there. So I guess I, I'd ask the committee now, just after listening to all the, the different reports from all the different principals, if the hybrid model is failing us both educationally and social emotionally, are you regretting that decision to choose the hybrid model?
As a point of order, Madam Chairperson, this is not point, this is not a public comment part of the agenda. You know, we recognize Mr. Reardon to be able to ma- make a statement, that's fine, but we're not, this is a superintendent's report, and we're not engaging in debate back and forth in this time of the agenda.
My, my apologies for speaking out of turn.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon.
To, to, you know, bring this piece to, to closing. Pre-COVID, regardless of what we were doing, schools faced and had issues. You know, you, you go back to last year, two years, three years ago, kids didn't come to school, kids struggled social emotionally, kids had issues in school. We struggled with writing, we struggled with reading, we struggled to engage kids. Prior to COVID, the model that we had and that we were experts in, we still had struggles with. So as we listened to this report, one thing that it highlighted to me was regardless of the model that we're in, and, and I'm gonna look at four different models. A pre-COVID model, a fully in-person model during COVID, a hybrid model, or a remote model, there are challenges. a fully in-person model during COVID, a hybrid model, or a remote model, there are challenges. And we've seen those challenges firsthand with the hybrid model. We've seen the challenges when we're fully remote, and we've seen the challenges being in a fully in-person model as we've had in previous years. I think what this did is this highlighted the fact that we're cognizant of these challenges, we're cognizant of, of the issues, and we need to start planning for what's going to happen the second half of this year and what's going to happen next year as we, whatever model it is we, we go into. The principals, along with the staff, did a fantastic job assembling and accumulating a lot of data and a lot of information. And we knew that giving kids a choice of whether or not they're going to log on or not log on on a remote date, we knew some of them wouldn't. The data really doesn't surprise us. What I want to dive into now, especially after we get the NWEA data from the middle school, and we spent some time looking at the additional data coming out of the Ames Office, how do we begin to address those gaps and assemble a plan? Part of that $180,000 SA2 grant is going to allow us to build remediation programs for the summer and for next year. Had a meeting with Mrs. Sosha, I believe it was on Monday or two, Monday, in which we started formulating some ideas as to what that program would look like. One thing we talked about with Mrs. Keegan was in a summer program, how can we incorporate busing for students? So parents don't have to worry about bringing their kids to school for a summer program that we can bring them in. All this data that we accumulated over these past few weeks with principals is going to help and guide us in those decisions going forward. So I know it sounds like there was a lot of doom and gloom in, in this presentation. There was a lot of data. But if we go back to pre-COVID, principals always were dealing with attendance. Principals were always chasing after kids for not coming to school. Teachers were always calling home, saying, little Johnny's not doing, doing the homework. Teachers always said, we keep on having to do, we keep on adding to the curriculum, but we're never adding to the school they are adding to the school year. So we've always faced challenges, but that's what we do in education. We see the curve ball and we learn to hit it. And I think our staff has done a fantastic job this year. I see it day in and day out, walking in and out of classrooms, talking to people, listening to principals and hearing what's going on inside the classroom. They're knocking it out of the ballpark with it, but they're learning to live within this confine of this hybrid system. And again, regardless of the model we're in, and regardless, again, pre-COVID, post-COVID, we're always dealing with a lot of factors to try to better educate our kids. I don't know if the committee has any other questions for the principals on their reports? All right. Next, we have the second reading of the Title IX policy. Ms. Burakar.
Well, I am, so basically, I provided a couple of presentations over the, the course of the last two school committee meetings. So at this point, do you guys have any additional follow-up questions, anything like that regarding the policy? I think it was pretty straightforward. You know, I think that the, the questions were asked in, in the first, the first presentation. So if you don't have any questions, then what we would do is we would have that final reading next time and then, and then look to seek approval of the policy. Anybody have any questions? All good. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Next is Program of Studies. I'm excited to have Josh present this to you. He's done a lot of work this year and has come up with some pretty fantastic ideas, especially with this pathway, some stuff with special education and some great opportunities for our kids at, at the high school without increasing staff or adding to the bottom line of the budget, which we'll talk to the next part of my presentation. So Mr. Romano, just a brief, a brief overview of Program of Studies.
Sure. So I had shared with you a short little slideshow that kind of speaks to what we're doing. And so my, my mentor, who was a very wise man, mentored me when I was an assistant principal. He taught me to build up opportunities for kids and that that's what I do is, my mentor was Mr. Olson. So just to throw him a little bit of a credit. So some of the things that we've done is we've raised our graduation requirements. We began changing them in the 2018, 19 school year. And what we've done is we've added 10 credit Spanish graduation requirement. I think I put five in your, in your packet, but it's actually 10, and a five credit fine arts requirement. And what that did was that brought us in line with what are called the MasCor standards. MasCor recommends graduation requirements for schools. And what they recommend is that they're in line with what the requirements are to get into a school in the UMass system. So we were short by our foreign language requirement and our fine arts requirements. We added those in. So starting with this year's junior class, next year's senior class, all students must meet the MasCor recommended graduation requirements with some allowances for students, for example, who have a language processing disorder to not have to take the Spanish graduation requirement. Our MasCor rates the last few years, we were at 41% with the class of 2020, so that's 40% of our, 41% of our kids who graduated eligible for admission to UMass. The year before that, it was only 33%. If you go back a couple of years, it was only 21%. So we've already made some significant gains in meeting those requirements. And what that does is that makes our kids competitive with other schools. The state average for MasCor completion is something like 84%. So if 84% of the state's kids are making that standard and only 30% of our kids are, we're behind, you know, our kids aren't competitive with other schools. So I'm looking forward to that change. We've added some new courses, too. So some of the new ones, we have a new senior capstone option. It used to be senior project, and we, every kid used to do a community service type project with a research paper as a senior. Now we've created a whole menu of options. They can take a digital literacy course. They can take a college career readiness course. They can work on DECA. They can still do senior project. They can work on the yearbook. And this new course is AP Capstone. This is by the college board, and it's a program based on two AP courses they take in their junior and senior years. AP Seminars taken in the junior, AP Research taken in the senior year. And students who earn a score of three or higher in both of those courses, AP exams, along with four other AP exams, receive an AP Capstone diploma, which looks great on your college applications, looks great on your scholarship applications. We're excited about that program. Ms. Malo is going to teach that. We also applied for a grant to get her trained for that program. So it's just another great option. I think it'll be our 15th AP course here. We have a couple of new AP, new art courses that are coming in as part of that graduation requirement. Mrs. Stan did an amazing job of sort of revamping the art offerings that we have here. So next year, she'll be offering Advanced Drawing and Painting II and Sculpture II. She offered one this year for the first time. So she's really expanding those opportunities for our talented art kids. We'll be offering Night Drama and Stagecraft, just like the band and chorus that kids can take after school for credit. They'll be able to participate in drama for credit. That'll help them to make that fine arts requirement. We have a couple of new science courses that we planned for last year. They didn't run this year, but we're going to offer them again, marine biology and horticulture, and a bunch of new Spanish courses, really trying to build up our kids' interest in language. So they're not just taking Spanish 1, 2, 3, 4, but Spanish Music and Dance, Spanish Legends and Film, Geography and History of the Spanish-speaking World to kind of give them some other options for their foreign language studies. We have a couple of cool opportunities, too. We are joining the Mass Seal of Biliteracy. This is a Department of Education award for graduates who attain high levels of proficiency in both English and a world language. So to receive this seal on their transcript and their diploma, they have to receive a qualifying score in both the ELA MCAS and on an approved foreign language assessment. There's a whole list of them, but this is another great opportunity for our kids to show that they've met a standard that isn't just a Douglas standard, it's an everywhere standard. Mr. Genet is working on getting certified to certify students with, with the OSHA General Industry Course. This is a 30-hour course that's needed for most types of manufacturing facilities, logistics, warehouse, things like that. And it, the, the kids will get a US Department of Labor OSHA wallet card to go with it, and he's looking to incorporate that in the manufacturing curriculum, another opportunity for our kids who are more of a vocational path, but couldn't or didn't want to go to BBT. We have a new work-study option. We're going to let kids basically work as teaching assistants, where they will work with a teacher, help supervise group works, basically work as tutors. And they'll devise and teach lessons under the guidance of the teacher. So it's a kind of a mentoring relationship between a student who wants to get into education and a teacher who's willing to take them on. And then we've also heavily invested our sweat equity. Is that how you put it, Dr. Vera?
I did.
Collaborative courses that share students and resources among the different Dual Valley schools. So this year, we have a cybersecurity course and a welding course that we're taking part of, and the plans are for that to continue. We also have our pathways. These are kind of a way to guide. It's a roadmap for students who have a particular focus and an interest. So it's similar to a college major. They have to complete certain courses, maintain an 80 or above in those required courses. There's usually additional things that make them more of a well-rounded student. So it's might be additional community service hours or a themed senior capstone or membership in clubs, an internship or work-study. And what this basically does, if a student makes all those requirements, they earn this designation on their transcript and their diploma, another thing to put in their college and financial aid applications. We had three pathways going into this year, Global Studies, which focuses on foreign language and economics and cultures, STEM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, and Business. Next year, we're going to add Criminal Justice, which is by far the most popular college major that students intend to pursue if they leave Douglas High School. And then a history pathway, because Ms. Fitz loves history and she wanted to get more kids involved in history. And then Dr. Vera had to kind of slow me down because I started talking about, well, can't we have an arts? What if we did, what was the other one that I started talking about? Health?
I think we just, I think you started talking about, you shared with you what I believe Northbridge was doing. Is it Northbridge or Southbridge?
Yeah, Northbridge. I got all.
Then you wanted to add some more with the art pathway. I'm like, let's, let's get what we have established before we start.
Which, which, make sure you record this, that, you know, in January, I achieved something I never thought I could achieve. I got Dr. Vera to say, hold on, slow down.
Yep.
So generally, he's been charging ahead and he got, you know, to say, slow down, but I'm very excited about those. And then finally, Special Education, we're looking at revising our Flex Center to establish more teaching sections. So to kind of get the kids back into inclusion settings and maybe have the Flex teachers out there co-teaching in those classes. So we're using Flex as more of a place where, you know, you really need to be there, not that you're in there because that's where you prefer to have your instruction. And so if we can get Mr. Nash, Mr. Manka co-teaching classes, instead of just teaching, you know, two kids in a separate setting, now they're working with a dozen kids outside of the Flex Center. And we've also had some talks about kind of a fifth-year program, something to focus on transitions to college and career for our students with disabilities who are intellectually capable of going on to college, but maybe need some of those social emotional skills to go with them. And so it can be a mix of college-level courses, life skill lessons, and then vocational courses. So we're kind of looking at what we can do with the pieces that we already have at the school to make those fit for those students that, it's only a few students, but I think we can create a better transition and a better springboard to their future success. So this is the stuff that makes me excited, talking about awesome things that we can do for next year and just creating opportunities for, for Douglas kids. And, you know, I, actually, I talked to Dr. Vera and Courtney about another one that I saw just yesterday or two days ago. You know, maybe we can bring in something to, to train our kids to be drone pilots. So all about opportunities.
Josh, I just want to thank Josh. Josh has done a fantastic job. This year, working with him and putting together and revising and revamping the Program of Studies. Coming from the high school world, you have to always keep that Program of Studies fresh. You offer your core classes, but the stuff that he's done with his pathways, the stuff that he's done reaching out to try to bring some new programs has been fantastic. And he's doing all this at the high school without, from a financial standpoint, increasing our bottom line. He's doing with the resources that, that we have. So this is great for, for our kids. And, you know, he's, he did a great video. One thing he's done in order to promote the high school for the middle school kids is to start doing some videos. He shared a robotics video that they did. I don't, he's still on here. Mr. Redden did a little cameo in the video. It was awesome. It looked great, hyping up the, the robotics program. And I think the kid said, if enough people sign up for robotics one, it means we can have robotics two. So very nicely done. Any questions for Mr. Romano about the Program of Studies? All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So I'm sure what people came to listen to now is the FY22 Preliminary Proposed Budget. I want to start off with a huge thank you to, to a lot of people who helped put this together. I want to start off by thanking Courtney. She's done a lot of work behind the scenes to do this. Our principals have been fantastic in analyzing the data, in putting together the budget, in going through things line item by line item. Our directors, you know, Donna Souza with Technology and Jeff Collette in our facilities have put together great budget. Nearly in the Office of Student Support, worked tirelessly on that special education budget, looking at our contracted services, looking at transportation, our office staff with putting together pay scales and pay grids. A lot of work went into this budget. It does every year. But in addition to that, the people getting me up to speed as to how it works in Douglas has taken some time, and I want to thank them for that. So with that said, I am pleased, and I'm going to be reading from some notes, there's a lot of information. I'm pleased to present the FY22 Preliminary Proposed Budget. This is something that we do in every, every year. Essentially, this is a level service budget. As always, there are some unknowns at this time, and there will be a gap between the final town appropriation and the proposed budget. As a result of this, there'll be adjustments going forward. We know that this is a proposed budget and just one part in many steps to get to that final budget. Over the next month or two, the leadership team will be working together collaboratively to look at additional budgetary savings to help mitigate the gap. We anticipate in early March, coming back to the school committee with an update as to where we are with the budget. We have a meeting with the Finance Committee on March 9th. We hope that between now and our next meeting with the school committee and with FinCom, we can get additional information from the town in terms of revenue projections and additional information that can help mitigate the gap between the two numbers. We anticipate holding our public hearing on the budget Wednesday, April 7th. The FY22 Preliminary Budget tonight represents a 7.46 increase over our F121 budget appropriation. That's a 7.46 increase over FY21 budget appropriation. In order to get down to that number to offset it, we used several revolving funds, grants, and donations in order to get down to that 7.46. Just for a point of comparison, in FY21, from the offsets, we used $2,713,242. No, I'm sorry, I take that back. In FY21, we used $2,534,596, and this year, we use a $2.7 million. That's a difference or an increase in a $178,646 increase we used in revolving accounts from FY21 to FY22 in order to help mitigate the gap between the two. In addition to budget adjustments that we'll be working on over the next month, there's some additional things that we're also looking at, but they're not known at this time. We don't know if we're going to be eligible for Special Education Circuit Breaker Extraordinary Relief. We still don't know if we're going to be eligible for it, and if we are eligible for it, we don't know what the dollar amount of that will be. We won't know that amount until later on this year. We know that we received the SA2 grant in the amount of $184,307. We still don't have the full parameters as to what we can use that money for. We'll know that hopefully the end of this week. Beginning of this week, we received a COVID grant in the amount of $49,125. We are hoping that we can use some of that money to offset some COVID expenses from this year that could potentially help mitigate some of our FY21. that could potentially help mitigate some of our FY22 budget. We're in the process, working with the Office of Student Support in reviewing the potential partnership with SWECC, the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. Joining them and becoming a member could have some potential savings in our budget. This preliminary FY22 budget, again preliminary, represents a 7.46% increase or $1,029,381 over our FY21 appropriation. We still don't know and will not know for another month or two what the final FY22 School Department budget will be and the final appropriation that we will have. At this time, in preliminary discussions with the town, there is a potential for a 1.5% increase or $206,907 over our FY21 budget appropriation. This would lower that $1 million delta to $822,474 in order to reduce the budget. As I said before, and I'll continue to state, there's work that we need to do to mitigate the difference between the two. We still have a lot of work to do. We'll come back to you in early March with an update. But as we stand for this first go-around of the budget, we are looking at a 7.46% increase over FY21 budget appropriation. A lot of numbers late at night after an hour and a half presentation. But we wanted to get that out to you. We're going to be sending it over to the town tomorrow. I'll be going over also tomorrow to the town to set up a meeting with the town to have some discussions as to the budget and how we can work collaboratively to mitigate the gap. Ms. Keegan, what did I miss?
I know, we're all set.
Oh, okay. Questions?
I'm going to give you a question. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's good.
Okay. So at the beginning of the item summary, we have that this is essentially level service. So can you give me the dumbed-down, layperson Becky version of how it's essentially a level service, but a 1.5% increase would still leave us 800 grand short? Like, what are the increased expenditures over the past year that? Yeah.
So Courtney, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, yeah. So essentially, to Becky and everyone, it's mostly a large percentage of our budget, actually over 87, between 87 and 88% is staffing. So a lot of that is steps. We do have some, you know, as you can see in the top line there, we do have some funding in the air for co-curriculars, degree changes, other, you know, wage adjustments, things of that nature. And why we say the word essentially level, level service is that, as you're aware, you know, there's always instructional supplies in textbooks and budgets, but it can vary year to year because depending on the types of textbooks and the number of textbooks, each school may or may not need. And sometimes service levels can change or the types of servicing required for special ed students can change. But it's still the same students, but there can be some adjustments there. That's why in the school department, I never say, never like to say level service. I say essentially level service because it's very complicated on the school side. You know, if you were just buying, you know, the same types of materials from year to year to year to year, you could say, oh, it's just a percentage increase on, you know, that, that material. But it's a lot more complicated than that. But a lot of it is the staffing. It's the staffing. The steps are included in this budget.
Okay.
As well.
Is, do we know if a substantial part of that is the COLA kicking back in too? Is that? It's just a big, it's just a big number. I remember the previous year.
Yeah. So the staffing change from one year to the next is 505, just over 505,000. But just longevity alone amongst $92,160, just longevity.
Yeah.
Because that changes too, whether or not you go from, you know, 15 to 16 years in the different levels. So all of those do come into play.
All right. Thanks, Courtney.
But it is mostly steps though.
Other questions? When we present in early March, I will make sure that my portion of the report is a lot smaller so we can do this a little bit earlier in the report. And we'll make sure to include a PowerPoint and a visual for people to be able to see. But this is just the first go-around and the first pass-through of the budget to share out. Any additional questions? All right. That's all I have at this point.
Yeah. Okay, we'll be moving on to the school committee report, accounts payable.
Okay, so I signed warrant 31, School 21, dated January 28, 2021, which was five batches totaling $91,868.17. Warrant 30, School Year 21, dated January 21, 2021, which was eight batches totaling $369,218.27. Warrant 30, School Lunch 2021, dated January 22, 2021, which was two batches totaling $4,361.84. And warrant 31, School Lunch 2021, dated January 29, 2021, which was one batch totaling $5,625.97. And there was nothing unusual.
Thank you, Becky. Moving on to the consent agenda, the January 6, 2021 meeting minutes.
I hate to be the squeaky wheel tonight. I noticed that there was a gap in the minutes related to Mr. Wagenheim's part of the conversation. There was just nothing in there in the minutes about our conversation with the DTA.
Okay, I will have Mrs. Tibbetts look at that and make that amendment. Not amendment, but make, make those additions for the next meeting.
So we'll skip that one. Moving on to January 20, 2021 meeting minutes.
Okay, now I'm wondering if I have the wrong one. It was the second one attached. Hold on, I'll try. Sorry.
Correct. It was, it was the second one.
Yeah.
So we're good with the sixth?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go back to January 6 then.
Sorry, my apologies.
No problem. January 6, 2021 meeting minutes. If nobody has any issues, I'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the school committee meeting minutes dated January 6, 2021.
Motion made by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Heather. Roll call votes.
Becky Ternia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you. Moving on to January 20, 2021.
Those are the minutes we're going to table so that we can add that section to it.
Okay.
There is, there is a mention though in the, in the January 6 meeting minutes of Mr. Wagenheim's.
There were two separate, there were two separate conversations.
Right, no, I know he, he had said both. You're right.
You know, I just think.
Both meetings. No, you're right. It needs to be in there.
It needs to be in there, yep.
Table January 20. Now we're moving on to additional COVID days for non-DTA members.
All right. And I think this is it for me after tonight. So let, let me explain to the committee what, what I'm requesting. As part of our MOA with the DTA this summer, all members of the Douglas Teachers Association received five additional COVID days. These are days that cannot be carried over from one year to the next and expire on June 30. These were put in place so that if a teacher was symptomatic or living with someone who was symptomatic and out of an abundance of caution, they would stay home, that this time would not cut into their sick time or their FF-CRA leave. This option was not extended to paraprofessionals, ABAs, custodians, cafeteria workers, administrative assistants, secretaries or administrators. Prior to December 31, 2020, this really wasn't an issue because everyone had the eligibility through FF-CRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. However, on December 31, 2020, FF-CRA ceased to exist. So what I'm respectfully asking the school committee to do is to approve that now that FF-CRA is no longer an option to all staff members, I'm recommending the school committee approve three COVID days for all non-DTA staff members to use between February 4 and June 30, should they become symptomatic or should they be living with someone who's symptomatic and need to stay at home out of an abundance of caution. This is something that all of our teaching staff and members of the DTA have, but everyone else does not have access to. And I know our teachers are in front of kids, but so are many of our secretaries, our paraprofessionals, our ABAs are there, our cafeteria workers with kiddos all the time. So I just ask that the same opportunity that was afforded to the DTA members also be afforded to the remainder of the Douglas employees. If people have questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. I know this is a big ask, but I just want to be fair and equitable to everyone that works for us.
Any questions? If not, there is, does everybody have the paperwork? There is a motion?
If I can enlarge it enough so I can read it. I move to approve three COVID days for non-DTA members to use should a non-DTA staff member become symptomatic and cannot attend work. This benefit will expire as of June 30, 2021 fiscal year end.
Motion made by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Heather. No further discussion. I'll be looking for a roll call vote.
Becky Ternia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, but I have a question though. Give me a chance. Is the, the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, are we able to get an extension on that?
So some, some people were, school districts had the option to do it, but we were advised by our attorney not to extend FF-CRA.
Okay. So Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Good question.
Okay. So we're moving on to the School Business and Operations Manager's Report.
I don't have anything else for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on the budget.
Thank you.
Does anybody?
Very welcome.
It's not anticipated. See none? Just a quick question, I wanted to verify that we aren't going to be meeting until March 3. Just in case.
I think we talked about potentially having a meeting on the 24th. I will know more next week if we need to have that meeting. But as of now, our next meeting is scheduled for March 3.
Sounds good. We have no need for executive sessions, so I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the February 3, 2021 School Committee meeting at 8:44 PM.
Motion made by Becky.
Second.
Second by Heather and a roll call vote.
Becky Ternia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Have a great vacation too. If we don't see each other.